Hi, Legria Forum.
Hello. And Stu.
Welcome, everybody, to the Seguian Forum. It's Monday, September 22nd. So let's go ahead and get started, Katerina. If you would.
Thank you. Greg Shelton.
How's it doing?
Emily Gray.
Here.
Anna Barbieri.
Here.
Diane Turner.
Here.
Keith Sussman. Laura Strino. Marcy Houseman here. Matt Holton. Mick Sudbury.
Here.
Patrick Schaper. Robert Pino.
Here.
Sherry Orne.
Here.
Tessa Stitzer. Tom Decider.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. And what's that?
Let's go and get started with our consent items. First up is the board meeting minutes. Any discussion or motions?
A motion that we approve board meeting minutes for August 25th, 2025.
So we have a first, a second. All favor.
Aye.
Carriers.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Uh, first and next second. Sorry. Distracted today. Uh, next up, we have the adoption of the public treasurers investment fund. Resolution granting authorization for Woodward and senior staff. And then still for motions.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Sherry, thank you to Emily. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All motion carriers. And third up is the adoption of Zion Banks, where Zion's Bank Resolution granting authorization for Woodward Staff, the acceptance of treasury management. Good record. Discussion or motion?
Motion to approve, will be agreed.
Second.
Emily, Marcy, thank you. All favor.
Aye.
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 You opposed? All motion carriers, thank you so much. And last up for consent items, appoint Kevin Tyrell as board member of the UASD. Excuse me. Board and Helen Kurtz as the alternative member representing the district. Discussion or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a key decision.
Without. Is that happening? All right, all favor.
Aye.
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 You opposed? All motion carriers, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open up our meeting for public comments. If there's anybody who'd like to speak to the board or to even staff, I'm here. We will do that now.
Thank you, Craig.
Patrick Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Patrick Craig, Executive Director of Solid Waste for Salt Lake County.
We can't hear you.
Oh.
Hold on, Patrick, we can't hear you if you can hear us. One second.
Let's see here. Can you hear me now?
We can hear him online, just so you guys know.
Guys, we've got to select our out for the output, probably.
It was taken here, so I had to tell.
Okay.
This was me again?
Gotcha. Okay, one more time, Patrick, if you would.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, Patrick Craig, Executive Director of Solid Waste, Salt Lake County. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Pam for her service, uh, for her partnership with landfill and the transfer station and just, we appreciate her and we wish her the best for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrick. He's been great to work with, by the way.
Sure.
I know he will continue to be.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and move on then. Uh, business item three dot one, retiring general managers, recommendation and considerations for future planning.
Hey. So I have here a letter for you, and I'm going to work my way through this. Um, it's been an honor to serve. I don't cry, but now you're going to make me cry. I've got a reading, got an expression. To serve as the founding executive from Wausatch Front Wastem and Recycling District, um, what we lovingly call Woodward. Since January 1st, 2013, I gave my full attention to the organization's creation and the successful launch. It was a bit rocky, but we made it. Uh, I did not take the transfer of 71 county employees, 72, including myself, to the district employment lightly, nor did the founding administrative control board, your predecessors. I have dedicated my career and my heart, my time, to Woodward's employees, our success, and focused on sustaining this organization for the long haul. As I skits it to retire, uh, I want to express my appreciation for your and your predecessors' support over the years. I've made things and gained an understanding of changes that will contribute to longevity of Woodward, and the following recommendations to you and considerations as you and the team face what I foresee as political and economic challenges. Nothing's changed over the past 14 years, so, um, the first recommendation, and I've, I reached, Evan and I reached out to many of you, were able to connect over the phone, but my thought is to adopt or amend the resolution. I, I think you can actually adopt the resolution to change our charter, and I know Rachel's not here yet. She's safe, but she did get in a car accident on the way. Um, but she will be here. Uh, but you can work with Evan and Rachel to amend the resolution or charter to allow servicing properties for larger than fourplex. So right now, we're living with a fourplex, and over the years, we've learned with Harriman's growth and how, um, tear down new builds are happening in, in existing cities, but with Harriman in particular, there was so much land out there, and HOA's developers really went in and started developing multi-unit complexes. So there are some complexes we had to let go that were up to a fiveplex. So there, there are situations that you can look at, um, as you go down the road, should you limit how many? Is it going to be six? Is it going to be eight? I know that you don't want to go too far because we don't want to compete further with private haulers. In particular, I wanted to show you, if you could go back to that map, thank you, Renee. This is a map of a development in Magna City called Mahogany Ridge, and it is a multi-unit. So what's the orange highlight there at the top? Those are single-family homes that we have already started servicing, and this is an HOA, it's a private development. So we're fine to, to service all of those, and even the ones down to the bottom, those are fourplexes. But where we get beyond the fourplex, over to the left side of that picture, the blue highlight, um, those are sixplexes. So similar to Harriman, we took on partial HOA complexes, and then we got into where we couldn't, and the HOAs were really pushing Harriman City. You know, you need to make Woodward provide the service for us, and I, I think you remember this year that it was a battle, and the board, um, had adopted a policy in 2020 that legally restricted even taking on any additional, uh, private roads. So I think it's definitely something to open up and look at. We had a situation where you all, um, did amend the policy to allow, um, the district to go ahead and, um, contract with, uh, new developments. Uh, there was a, uh, a gentleman in, in Holiday City that reached out to the city and asking if they could have Woodward services, so you all amended that policy to start it up again. So it's definitely something to look at so that we can keep the economies and efficiencies of scale throughout the district. That's the first one. Um, the next one, and this is another recommendation, just so you know, this is coming from staff. Our asset manager, Andy Keen, who manages the trailer program as well, he's here, I saw him come in, he's right back there. Um, he, he has the thought of phasing out using trailers for rental services, keeping enough to service the, the canyons, Immigration Canyon and Big Cottonwood for their annual reservations, so they have a reservation option as well. Trailers are more versatile in the canyons, and it would be cheaper to go up there than the, uh, the roll-off containers. So, um, there is a higher cost to using trailers, and that's because we have to insure them, and they are on wheels, we also have to license them every year, containers on that truck, so it's considered part of that fee that, so there could be some savings there, and that's something that, that Evan and team can explore down the road. And then, just so you know, Evan is very aware of these recommendations and considerations. Um, I don't know if you want to speak to your thoughts, but...
Sure, uh, you know, Pam and I have spoken about essentially all of these recommendations, and I'm, I'm in support of them. I think for the first one, that was just discussed pertaining to the charter. I think it is important that this organization has the ability to kind of evolve with the changing landscape, and evaluate what that looks like for servicing beyond of, I think, Pam and I talked about, at least for new developments, or in often cases, I've learned that there's been a lot of single-family homes or duplexes that have been demolished and redeveloped into larger, uh, multifamily complexes and so forth. And so having the ability to retain those services, and as Pam mentioned, to maximize our volumes of scale and efficiencies, I think will go a long way with the longevity of the organization, uh, throughout, hopefully my next 20 years of service with them, so.
There we go. Um, yeah, and then, uh, along with the, the thought of the trailers, uh, the, looking at extending the seasonal container reservations to scrap, so that could be renamed down the road, um, to have that all year round, um, to, to have that for residence, as a reservation year-round. Um, and then exploring charging for zones in relation to container slash trailer rentals, however that's going to evolve. Um, Evan had experience in Roma that he would charge higher fees for outlined areas for roll-off containers or, um, and this is something that you can think about down the road when, when you're exploring. What do you want to charge each city that's closer or further away? Could that be something to look at in the future? And that feasibility study that we'll talk about a little later, I think will give some, some options or some understanding of the costs for outright areas. Um, this is a big one, and planning for the district's own administration building. So the district does own land, that's across the, the tracks, um, that's where our trucks are parked for fueling. Uh, there is an old truck barn, and I think was built in the late 60s, early 70s, um, where the districts are, their sanitation divisions' trucks be parked in. Um, since we went to CNG, that's not an option, um, but now we're getting some diesel trucks in, so we could probably take that back, let's kind of link that up to Evan's team. But, um, I think that you all know that we pay Salt Lake County for leasing space in this building, also pay them for the utilities, a lot of the overhead, so this would be basically what Helen has called good debt. They're basically paying yourself, and you'll have equity in the building, whereas now you have, there's no equity for the district in paying for this building, unfortunately. Um, this, as you know, to bond for any kind of a large project requires a big cash balance. Right now, our cash balance is pretty healthy, but that would mean trying to sustain that to where, a point where you could build your own facility. Um, and this would also allow for the district to have our own crew room, our own training room, so we're not in competition with Public Works or Flood Control or Fleet even. Uh, and this would also allow, I think, a better sense of the managers being able to control the culture that we really desire, that compassion is back in development for our team. Um, they do a great job, and I think having more of a controlled environment helps that as well. And then future considerations, I know this one hasn't been popular, but staff has talked about it before, but down the road, looking at charging a fee for the container program, instead of being a reservation, perhaps there might be a, a, a charge for that. Uh, and then different service levels and fees for municipalities where residents and the cities have that desire. I know that board member Orne has brought that up before, and so has board member Sudbury. Uh, in closing, I will add that the leadership team has dedicated the past six months to succession planning to ensure the success of the organization and a smooth transition between general managers. Evan Tyrell is the very capable and competent person. I share your confidence in his ability to serve as the district's general manager, CEO. Made a good break. Now this next one, I'm not sure.
All right. So Pam, just to follow up with that, uh, what was the recent, what made you that, uh, fourplex for us?
I think, I can only, I mean, it's, the, the district was created in 1977. I can only guess that it was because of competition with privates, um, but I can't say that when the district was formed, it was for the entire unincorporated county, um, which then basically included everything except for the big cities that were already here, Sandy, um, Murray, and I'm going to forget West Jordan, but any, anything that is not the district already. So, yes, would you ever? Yeah, so, so, and it's always been allowed that the district or the sanitation division could, um, service private communities, but it had to be under contract, and that's where that kind of fell off. Um, there were some contracts that Renee was able to dig out from the, you know, the late, well, the late 1900s.
1900?
Yeah, right. Uh, before 20, the, the 2000s, but anyway. Um, and since then, she's done a great job to go out, find those communities, get contracts in place, and if it didn't make sense for the district to service them, then that stopped, and they transferred, right? So that, it's hard to know, but I would suspect it was to not be.
I just, I, I think it's useful for us to understand the reasoning behind that, um, if we're going to counter around that, you know, how reasonable to counter around it as well, but understanding why it was created in the first place, whatever the circumstances, so.
I had one, you have some, um, no, we did have private, we did the private thing. The biggest reason in my mind, or making sure we don't go to too much home without it is typically, in our community, now, those are all HOAs, and HOAs, though, are by the same room, exactly, that, that, other communities do. So we end up having very, very tight roads, um, very poor accessibility and those kind of things, and so it definitely increases the risk to the district, in my mind, dramatically, because you not have good visibility and good access on those types of roads. With those tiny, wobbly design, sorry, some divisions that, that is really difficult to try to address.
Yes, thank you. We've gathered the risk, we've gathered the special ability on the phone.
Yeah, so I just suggest being very careful with that, because there is accessibility issues for those types of.
Yeah, I, I would think that we would do a survey of some types, we would agree to bring something off like that, but, yeah, you know, to your point, you know, it's, it's probably easy to overlook, like, yeah, we can get a truck in here, and then reality sets in, oh.
Did you have parking that everybody in, all their country parks, and then you have this much, and we get garbage, and, uh, oftentimes, in those types of communities, the children that, that are running in and out makes kind of, I just, it, it obviously, garbage has to be, and have parking lots too, and that was primarily the result.
Thank you.
Um, I do think that if maybe we're considering, I mean, expanding beyond fourplexes, just as the county is able to start facilitating more and more, I think a lot of our communities are seeing more, you know, larger multiplexes, whether it's sixplex or eightplex, uh, just they're a little long from maybe starting.
Go, Lori.
I think if we, to, I think we could actually have a, uh, street, we'd be on state, you know, so we had some guidelines where they had to meet certain qualifications, we probably would consider saving. It's an option.
I think on top of that, too, uh, some areas are required that comes up to the main street.
That's why I require some of them, since, too, you don't need those qualifications, you know, we have those things in writing, those are some things we can save, we start our, it's just things that keep our higher safety. Somewhere, you know that we can safely get your garbage otherwise, or need you to meet some qualifications.
Remember, uh, excuse me, board chair Shelton, Renee Flatt had a comment.
Uh-huh.
Yes, thankfully, a few years ago, when I joined, um, I developed what we call a weighted risk assessment, to where then, before we go out and you consider a private community or HOA, um, I go out and literally measure the road, and make sure that if there's a gate, that, you know, that the gate, I mean, that's where those contracts come in, and they're really important, because then they literally checkmark every requirement in there. So then, if any changes later, I can go back and say, you know, and here's the contract you signed, and here's our risk assessment that we did, because things have changed, we probably need to bring it back, so thank you for that. So you've already, so we already had that, so that's great.
Well, it sounds like it'll be a great discussion then, when it comes up.
You're welcome to call in. Flash National Park, where you're.
I know he hasn't got the ball, he can take it. I'm sure, he'll be his first rodeo with his family, so.
All right, thank you, Pam. Um, now moving on to the main event, so I'd like to say. As the adoption of the resolution expressing appreciation of retiring founding general manager, CEO, Pam Roberts, retiring after 28 years of public service. Um, I've said it before, and, you know, kind of had a nice little light joke, that, you know, I always thought Pam was, uh, I met her in roughly 2018, so not very long compared to some people that have known her much longer than I have. And, uh, I was involved with the community council, and she would show up every now and then, and talk a lot about garbage and recycling and the do's and don'ts, and I just always thought, she's such a lady, you ought to promote her or something, she used to be. Yeah, then, then come to find out, she's the, our CEO and general manager, uh, so, you know, the joke was on me, but, uh, but no, Pam, Pam's always, uh, every interaction I've had with Pam, she's, she's always handled it with grace, um, and selflessness, and, I mean, she's, she's even taken raises that we've given her, and spent that on, on the training for employees here, and who does that, you know? Somebody who genuinely cares about this district, and so, uh, so as with that, I'd like to go ahead and read our resolution and thank Pam personally, um, and then, uh, we'll go ahead and get started with this resolution now, so. This is a, a resolution of the Wausatch Front Waste and Recycling District Board of Trustees expressing appreciation to founding general manager and CEO Pam Roberts. Resolution number 4436, adopted Monday, September 22nd, 2025. Be it known and remembered that whereas the Wausatch Front Waste and Recycling District, the district formerly known as the Salt Lake County Sp- Special Service District Number One, was established January 1977 by the Salt Lake County Commissioner, and renamed the Wausatch Front Waste and Recycling District effective as of January 1st, 2013. And whereas on November 10th, 2009, the Salt Lake County Council created the Administrative Control Board, or to govern the district effective January 1st, 2010. And whereas on March 16th, 2022, the county council recognized the district as a local district on the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees was granted full governing authority as allowed under state statute. And whereas Pam Roberts was hired on July 16th, 1997, by Salt Lake County, and transferred to the Wausatch Front Waste and Recycling District on January 1st, 2013. And whereas, this dedicated public servant has served the district and its residents faithfully and diligently for 28 years. Okay, oh, I'm good. And whereas this honorable general manager, CEO is retiring, the district wishes to express appreciation to Pam Roberts for her years of dedication, dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved by the board that Pam Roberts has appreciated and recognized, we applaud all the great efforts of Pam and all the district staff, appointed and adopted the 22nd day of September, 2025.
Chairman, I have a moment to.
Yes.
I wanted to introduce my wonderful family that, um, have been supportive ever since , uh, 2015. Renee and I first met, but many people, many of you met my beautiful wife, Renee Roberts, and we were married, uh, March of 2018, and wonderful, a wonderful son, Jordan, and, and our daughter, beautiful daughter Maggie Simmons. Um, they're both here, and I appreciate them, I want to tell them, I want to even know how proud I am of this family. And you, you already know that Renee retired last year from 20, 38 years with the IRS, and, and Maggie is in research as well, I think this is a service family, I don't know what, you know, we've got to pass it on, but Maggie's, uh, working in the U of U Research Center, um, working on, and, and epilepsy, trying to prevent epilepsy and seizures, so proud of that, um, proud of you, and Jordan, proud of you, just is starting his first semester at the University of Utah for the MSW program, and, uh, works in, uh, a, 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 right, and has been working with youth for quite a while, we're very proud of this family. They've been supportive of me, thank them, and all Renee's been patient, or on vacation, I get a call or have the dash, pull out the back office, um, just want to thank them very much. I also just want to thank the, the team, I've asked them to come, uh, these are the managers and, and support coordinators that are here, Andre, I think, got back to his office, oh, the number one. Um, when we get to the budget, it's okay, I'd like them to introduce themselves because they are, nobody does anything wrong, right? We just can't do some, it, what we carry every day, we can't do that. So, that's, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Second. Thank you, Lori. Robert, second. We need to roll call for this. Another one, what was it, two of them, Paul, uh, if you would, Trevor.
Greg Shelton.
Aye.
Emily Gray.
Yes.
Anna Barbieri.
Yes.
Diane Turner.
Aye.
Keith Sussman. Laura Strino.
Yes.
Marcy Houseman.
Yes.
Matt Holton. Mick Sudbury.
Yes.
Patrick Schaper.
Yes.
Robert Pino.
Aye.
Sherry Orne.
Absolutely, yes.
And Tessa Stitzer. Tom Decider.
Aye. Thank you, Katerina. Motion carriers, um, the resolution is adopted. Um, I did speak to everybody, uh, about this, and they, they all had your authority, but if they're not here, can't officially vote, you have those, those votes as well.
Thank you.
Not officially. You know, the, the first appreciation of the district is, is one thing, but we, uh, the board felt that you needed a little extra appreciation from us, and, you know, this represents, would you grab that up upon it? It's a, all the way against the wall there, there you go. Uh, this rep, this kind of represents Pam's team spirit.
Oh.
We got, uh, we got together and, uh, felt that you needed a little extra thank you from the board personally.
No, Frank drove all around the county, getting, this is awesome.
I have a whole finger written down, but I can't get through it. But, you know, ba- basically, it just goes along with your, your team spirit and culturally that you don't care, and, uh, and be thankful for that, so.
Thank you so much, this is awesome.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, thank you, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
We still haven't had enough for a month, or, well, you know.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. That's wonderful. I know, right, bro? I'm gonna have that.
Well, Laurie doesn't quite look like the look we're talking about, if you notice. It's slightly different. It's meant to be intensely look like some, so an employee gave us this idea. And of course, when I heard it, I was like, oh, we're doing, that's obviously, I had no idea Pam basketball. Hopefully that's true because otherwise.
Otherwise, she would all of them go watch.
It is true. That was my passion.
People with race.
Yes, that's cool.
I was, I was only going to give her credit if you didn't like it. Thanks, Katerina. It was actually while we were in the transfer station, so. I had that much time to basically try to put that together for you, so.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a little, sure. I love it. Never had a retired jersey, so.
Well, hopefully, hopefully it can stay in your role and can be proud of that.
Yes.
But no, our feelings doesn't match the, the decor anyway. They are staring. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to, let's read up two, Bob, Bob Shutter. Oh, sorry, I didn't work that well, I was busy firing over here. Three dot three. In fact, the general manager is for a current hurdle.
If you overthink it, it's hard to say. There were some occasions. Good morning, everyone. I'll keep this relatively brief, just want to kind of point out a couple of items that, you know, I've been working with the team and Pam. As my first four weeks with the organization, which I will say have been incredibly inspiring. And also really to understand the amazing team that Pam has built throughout her, her tenure and, and years of service here. So, secondly, I really appreciate the board and its succession planning and getting me on board to work with Pam. Still very much in a learning mode and still have lots to learn. But this is a really great model and example of effective succession planning. I really, really appreciate that, so. With regards to my report, I won't go over all of the items that are in there, but I just wanted to point out, I won't include this in future reports, but you know, I guess one, Pam has kicked herself out of her office and the websites. And so we do professional headshots and so that's the picture that's now on the websites for what we're, that will be used moving forward. I'll probably move that out of this report moving forward and subsequent months. Also, I want to say here. So there's been a lot of events and a lot of learning and really getting to know the entire team and the support team has, has been incredible. So I'm still actively working on getting to understand the programs and services that we provide and really working with the team to build those relationships and collective trust and respect amongst the team. And one thing I've really been focusing on is to come in as a supporter and to not be a disruptor as to what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. The programs and services, of course, but it's, of course, actively learning. So Pam and I have been attending, I think I've had seven different council and county council meetings to introduce myself to those elected officials and those useful teams, which has been great. We have two more, three more this week, I believe. So she's been keeping me very busy and, and also been attending many events, community events and woodwork events as well. And so I have included a couple of pictures here. So we did hold the annual summer picnic two weeks ago at the Tabor'sville Vista Park. So attended that, there's some photos with Pam and, and the team in there as well. But we've, we've been very successful and to my understanding, a large turnout of, of the team. And I believe some of our supervisors and, and frontline workers kind of coordinated for some of the more outlined communities that we service in here. And for example, to make sure that they could actually swap their routes and attend the picnic as well, which was again, very successful. And Andy and, and others were the, I call them the grill masters, so maybe they grilled all the food during this event as well. I'm sure there's not missing any major points here. The following week, as we have toured and Pam brought me through Big Cotton Canyon, Town of Brighton, and also immigration just last week to really learn and see those service areas and some of the unique challenges that are posed to our operations teams and the collection of, of the repries and recycle there. And then we also have toured many other facilities. I'll be reached out to hopefully Mr. Craig soon to tour the Salt Lake County landfill and other locations. So we did tour the Rocky Mountain Materials Recovery Facility last week as well. So the very last page has a group picture, it kind of got washed out when we scanned it in. But if you can just scroll that final picture there. But going with our recycling support team, Helen joined as well. Pam and I, James, and the two representatives of Rocky Mountain Recycling. So kind of a cool picture there to, I gotta show where we're working on. So in addition to all these items that I've been attending, of course, spending very actively learning about all of our administrative, operational, financial systems, working with Helen, Pam, many others on the preliminary proposed budget that we'll discuss shortly as well. And then also actively supporting with a variety of support and Q Renee planned for helping to draft a preliminary, a draft for the R and P for the feasibility stuff. So it's been definitely hitting the ground running, the very active learning. And it's been an amazing onboarding experience and as I mentioned, very inspiring with meeting all the team members and working with Pam over the past four weeks. And this is day one of week five for, so. And briefly, all this mentioned, we did work with Katerina and I to the next patron, please, if you don't mind. We did provide this community newsletter, essentially introducing myself, recognizing Pam for her years of service. So I think this is actually posted on several cities' websites as well. So we used White City for this example. I think Katerina puts these together on a monthly basis and sends them to the various municipalities and puts their logos on them. So I just see this has been uploaded on several of the, I think, City Bank actually has it on their website as well. So just getting the word out and of course, this is our community newsletter that talks about upcoming events and notifying team members of our upcoming change to monthly billing and sales. That's all I have for today. I'm happy to answer any questions you will have.
Thank you, Helen. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just realized I, I meant to actually open up the discussion to the rest of the board when I was presenting and to make any comments, so. I'll, I'll open that up now. If any more memories wants to say anything, I know. No pressure, I realize it's kind of less, less than.
Well, I did want to say I'm very proud.
Sorry, you don't have to.
Karen Roberts. I just wanted to second what she said about being on vacation, taking calls, taking, I mean, even from customers, customers, you all on the board or, or employees, you know, that she would take the time and she's saying, sorry, I don't bring this. It's like, no, that, that's very important and it is inspiring to me, very precious. And all her work and dedication and the commitment, it's just, it's amazing to see even at home. I mean, I'm sure you guys all can see that, but even at home, you can see the commitment she has to the people and to the company. And, and one thing I want to share just personally is when we first met, I said to Pam, I, this attests to the kind of person she is. I said, you know, just warning me, I have three goats, three cats, a dog and two kids. And she said, I've always wanted a big family. Test the type of person she is and take a dog. So she, but I'm very proud of her and I'm glad I got to know all of you too. And all of your employees. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say something about the cookies?
Oh, yes. So I was going to mention that the cookies, I knew on the last one I had to bring cookies. And I was thinking that some I have heard might be leaving the district and maybe they shouldn't have any if they're going to think about. I am just saying how grateful I am for professionalism, which you've always been. It's been a pleasure to work with you because whether we agree or disagree, you work in a very professional way. Appreciate that, that you, that you care. Thank you.
Well, I'm happy to agree with that.
And you've made a solo maintenance for us. Really how, you run a tight ship and a good ship and, and you've, you've surrounded yourself with really good people. And that makes it very easy for us and appreciated that and appreciated that you are so willing to teach. Because we come on as city council and we all now up from down in districts. And I've been so good about teaching and mentoring each one of us in that practice.
Spun a dog touch.
Along the court as well as with.
Yes, that's right.
There's, there's basketball trash talk.
Real talk. Thank you all.
I'd just like to say how much I appreciate your being here. I've served Murray for about 12 years and on this board off and on through that time. And the reason I longed to serve on this board is because of you, because of your leadership. I knew that I would always know what's going on. It would be a really good board to serve on. And so anyway, I just really appreciate it. Murray has always really appreciated your leadership, so thank you. And we're going to miss you.
Show a welcome back. You don't miss this too much because you have a lot.
Pam, a special thank to just your attention to detail and just realizing that each one of our communities are unique and different and willing to go the extra mile to make sure that we're in a good place as we represent those behind us. Thank you for understanding and, and in my community, my council, everyone has served here in this seat and you are their favorite. Sends you their best and congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think have you embodied what needs to be a home servant. Work for the, that you genuinely care about offering the best service to the residents of all of our cities. It is, we're all trying to make decisions and I'm sure it's trying to do what's best for our city. We're all just trying to figure that out. I know that, that you could have that as your focus as well, that you, you just genuinely care. And I, and it comes out, it comes out for all of us. You care about us as people, you care about our residents. Do you, I mean, we all can learn from you and be that kind of home servant.
Cute. This is my 28th year on the special district board, almost 25 years. And this is the first time actually that I've come onto a board where I didn't have to do some cleanup, which I'll be honest, special districts are not easy. There's a lot that they have to do, there's a lot that they are far and deep away state. There's always a rule that you're not aware, could be just changing the legislative session. We have a great association, tries to keep us inspired with that, but not everybody gets the training. I already go to the Utah Association of Special District and stay on top of it. So we can make sure that we're on top of it, which is awesome. Remember when I was asked to be on the board or something? Asked me on the board, they have special district experience and I called Pam and said, hey, I'm coming on the board. And, and she called me, and she called me back and checked it. And it was funny because the first time I met her was at the Association of Special District meeting. And it just had a brief, I didn't actually get her name, a brief conversation. I do have a deep memory of that and it was, we were 14, 15, 16. So it's been some time, but I just remember being impressed with you there. And in all the years I've served in special districts, especially coming forward, there's always something that needs to be fixed, to change or to be sort of moved on, etc. When I came on here, I always thought there's going to be something to check and make sure problem, regulations and stuff. And I'm pleasantly thrilled to see that actually be a good sound policy. And, and that, that's also, you know, cool support as well because we did some policies, but good sound. What we do, our budgets and being here, did get, we, we look at what we do, what, what's on the record. Are we keeping our employees happy here and are we doing the suspicious things that we can for our residents and that? And when we do that, it's important that we recognize that we're serving not just our communities and our cities, but we're serving the people who basically need trash picked up. And having come to Philadelphia after the trash strike, can I just tell you? I appreciate this way more than I did before because people don't put trash anywhere. We don't have a place to put it. That is what we saw coming into Philadelphia, the strike had been over by, I think, two days. It hired hundreds of temporary workers to, you know, downtown as best they could. But they didn't have time to get the trash out. So literally there were garbage bags over the top of their cartridges. It couldn't get collected and the smell was something interesting. You found also is all of the grease, all of the water flow areas, everything had filled the trash. By the way, because they have no place to throw their stuff. And so it, it was horrible. So if you don't think what you do is vital to the survival of everybody around you, I will tell you that there are hospitals there, all the people can sit just from not being able to have representation. People, the health department is talking about what a crisis it's become for them and that they seem. All through there and all the other things along with it. What we do here with trash, is one of the most vital things we can do for the people that live here and sell their town. And it is what keeps us safe, healthy, operating, functional as a society. And when that breaks down, it's not pretty. She has to see the end show up even, and even the whole flood showed up and it wasn't very exciting. So just so you know how important the job we've done and all these years, Pam, and all the good work that we've done. And we've done for this time, it's amazing. And I didn't, of course, need to after Philadelphia, how vital this world really is, how important this particular board is to our citizens. So thank you, you to your staff, thank you to everybody who puts their, their time out there and actually makes this place where we're sitting. Share, I think you brought us. Well, you know, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Also wanted to add something, kind of adding to all my mom's, that she took her job so seriously. I mean, inside of the house, like work and even at home, I mean, that was such an important thing. You know, around our house, I'm just like making sure that things were really just taken care of. And, you know, if we just, you can tell just by how she was at home, that how much she really loved what she did and that she did so much pride and joy in everything that she did. I mean, the countless weekends that she would work to get things done, you know? She was just so devoted to this position. She cared very much about all of you guys. She had a lot of work and effort in making sure that you all were taken care of so well. So wanted you all to know that she really did care about you guys very much. And as living with her, it showed over time.
All right.
Pam Roberts just sounds like you have first experience. One of your secret first. You know, that you say to her. But also I've always really appreciated your. You know, that you're saying, but also I've always really appreciated your system calls, your chat in. It's always so helpful to get, kind of let alone talk about everyone's happiness, question answer. Hope we make sure that you all are happy for this trip. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's everybody. All right, now we can move back to our regularly scheduled program.
No, excuse me, Greg, I didn't get to speak yet.
Okay.
Pam, on behalf of the City of Kearns, we'd like to thank Pam for her years of dedicated service. She's been great and helpful with us. I mean, I've been on this board for, I think, seven years now as a representative of Kearns. She's been great, great liaison whenever we've had problems. She's been more than helpful to jump in action and get us taken care of. So I just want to say thank you for all your great years of service and I hope the best in the rest of your ventures, Pam.
Thank you, Patrick.
Work members, I just wondered if you can provide a friendly reminder as to the day and time of Pam's retirement party.
Is that, is that this week? It's, we're doing open house from seven to nine. We'll have some food and out for breakfast. And you'll, you'll see here too that I have a photo frame. If you'd like to sign that as well, we're, we'll be with the collage for her. And also I've got share a memory card. So if you have a favorite memory or some sentiment you want to share, you can write it there and put it in the box. We'll give you those. But yeah, we'd love to have you for breakfast. Can you come say?
Thank you.
Sounds like I'll be missing class.
Is it the breakfast? Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and move back into our regular program here. I think I'm on three dot four. Six, the proposed budget be scheduled. Pam, tell them.
Well, I'll start off with, if you'll back up to that front page, I want to really show off the.
It's sunny.
Okay, so the, I just wanted to show you the truck wraps that James Kelsey, our sustainability coordinator, created. And Jorge Benitez also did the Spanish version of, and you can't see it up close. But basically it's talking about going to people's billing and trying to promote that for our residents. And then the QR code, and I tested it out, it does work. It's hit the QR code that's either in the newsletter or on the truck and you go into it and sign up for e-bill. All right, thanks for that, I appreciate that.
Do you know how many people have clicked on and for that? We don't yet, we can check. I'll be honest with you.
As far as growth and?
Yes.
E-bills.
E-bills. We have information on that. We now have 18,815 customers signed up for e-bill, which is 457 more customers than when we started kind of advertising this. And we're 59 since July. I don't have a percentage calculated, but I believe when we started it was about 20%. Our fastest were on e-bill. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just Rachel Anderson checking in real quick there. I do want to recognize the fact that Rachel Anderson, our wonderful legal counsel, is, is a big part of keeping this district in compliance and helping to develop policies and procedures. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized her. Okay, getting into the proposed budget. As you know, we've been working hard as a team and I really wanted to make sure that the team was here. We've been absorbing the increased costs that we're, we've been occurring last year and this year to make sure that we do not need to implement that $1.50 per month increase that Zion's financial advisory from recommended for us. So if it's okay, I would like to have each of our management and, and Katerina also introduce yourselves. We'd be pretty good, let the board know who you are and what you do. Justin, why don't you start us off?
Hey, I'm Justin Tuck, I'm the Legends Manager for Refugees and Special Services.
Shane Norris, Safety Board.
I think he could have done Operations Manager. C L.
I'm a H I S Geograph Information System Coordinator. So I do kind of work for, for support our team drivers management. So I schedule green waste pickup, census subscription. I do element, every sample of scrap and my so drivers. So just supporting where we need to go, where we need to be and trying to save some money and stuff. It is census subscriptions. More efficient.
Thank you.
C O N D and the Customer Management of Recycling, including green waste and glass, also proper scrap program.
I'm Davis Pelzey, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator. I work under C O D, just providing education and recycling services. Drivers and quality.
Yale Johnson, Customer Service Manager, I have site manager, I've been here 11 years. And I wanted to tell Pam, thank you for everything, all the support and everything that she's done for all of us.
And I'm ninety-eight, Asset Manager, also.
Yes.
He's a desk worker, Human Resources Manager, everything from posting jobs, the grid hive, all the way through Zappero.
And I'm Helen Kurtz, Finance Director.
I'm General, General Manager. So we, we have an acronym, so I'm the I G M, Pam's the retired General Manager.
Yes.
Renee Land, Minister of Management.
Katerina Garcia, Orkburg Extraordinaire.
I'm the Executive Assistant and the District Representative as well. That was the lateral movement.
Rachel, just walked in.
Are you okay?
Are you okay? I'm good, yeah. I thought you were hurt. I had a semi truck backing to me. And I was going zero miles per hour and they stopped in front of me and then inexplicably in the street decided to start backing up where there were people. So it crushed my car with wing blades, it was like very low speed. It's just that they were enormous, so. Very. Yeah.
The look on their face, but I'm your manager.
I can disclose that, they didn't even know they'd hit me. They're, they're so big and they're so far away from me, they didn't even realize anything happened. And I told the guy, it was someone who they're working on construction on South Town Mall in that hockey center. It's just on the mono rating road, like the road that goes around one row of the inside. And yeah, so I got, what? Anyway, we've worked done, I'm good, we're all good. I'm here. Roughly second. Yeah, yeah. At least the car apparently could drive. Yes. Yeah, yeah, just some damage on the exterior, but still not what I wanted.
Did our Sandy police?
Yes.
Support you? I'll let the chief know you're satisfied.
Yes.
You know stuff, the officers who showed up?
What's that?
You shared, like they have all the information that you have. I'm here, okay.
Thank you.
Just so we know, we recommended you earlier because they were talking about how great the policies are, the lines. So I made sure I gave you that. Yeah, so just, just to keep going, this team has worked hard to make sure that we're absorbing the increased costs as best we can. They've also absorbed workloads as we get going through here. But we're gonna sustain the service levels with weekly curbside garbage and recycling, the container program with scrap. In-house, I want to make sure I tell this in-house local customer service. Not every holler does have this, just want to make sure everyone understands that we're here, we're right here in Midtown. If anybody walks in, we're here. If they call, they can get a live person to talk to. We have the seasonal services with leaf bag, Christmas tree, container repair and replacement. That's part of Andy's team that takes care of that. And their goal is to get that done within five to seven business days of getting that request. Flapfield Bakers, which you all know, monthly billing is gonna start next January, January 1st. The first year will be received by us as residents in February. And then we have the central glass sites, additional services, the trailer rental. We'll get into some of those fees as we go in here. The, we're gonna keep the curbside green waste subscription to $12 a month and keep the curbside glass subscription at $8.50 a month. So getting into the personnel highlights, this is where our team has worked hard to make sure that we absorb those increased costs and really look to where can we cut this year. So earlier this year, we did do a RIF.
We have some, Dave, before you just, I just, and I know you're gonna go on to the details of this, but we hate raising fees. And I mean, we're just raising fees on your friends and neighbors and it's essentially a tax. I think Sherry O says that, she's right. So I just want to say how much we appreciate all that Pam's just about to go in, that you are trying, that you are, where we need this cost. So we don't have to do that again. That's, that's a lot of work, that's a lot of digging in ways that you guys can absorb those costs. And it helps us so much because we are the ones who get the calls and talk to the neighbors and the people who are furious with us. Because, you know, we, we all know when our taxes go up, it's really hard and we're, and we're talking to those people. It's a struggle for and we hate doing it and you guys are making this possible so that we don't have to do that. So thank you, sorry, you can go now. Thank you.
Yeah, it takes a team. So thank you very much, Helen, you're so spot on. Because absorbing those increased workloads with reducing four FTEs and understanding these were not drivers. This was HR, payroll specialist, it was our training coordinator, associated with the Afrentis Program. Those workloads are being absorbed with Shane and with Justin and Steve Whitney, who's our supervisor, with HR and payroll. That's Hazel, who's taken on some additional responsibilities. She has a lot of responsibility, but it's just additional tasks. Katerina is also helping her and then Lori, who is our payroll technician, absorbing that as well. So the savings from those, the four FTE reductions at 352,000, that is before the benefits. So you can imagine that's higher with benefits as far as savings. Coming in, that's gonna help us absorb the increased cost with a 3.5% COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment. That's been recommended by Melissa Carter, our compensation consultant. And that's what we're proposing now is a 3.5%. And then during the pre-board meeting with Board Chair Shelton and Vice Chair Gray, they asked for some history as far as COLAs. So the past two years, we did do a 4%, but understanding that markets are starting to slow down. I mean, labor markets are improving, we're, we're seeing that with hiring drivers, especially with the salary increases. As you can see, there's been significant dollars put into salary market adjustments, especially with CDLs. So that is really helping to, to recruit and retain. And then we're proposing again a 2% merit increase. And you can see the dollars and cents associated with that. We'll continue the one-time lump sum for employees that are at the top of their range, where they would not be eligible for that 2%. We want to make sure that they are rewarded for their good efforts and, and getting a positive evaluation. We're looking to reclassify two scrap ground crew to have, add two more drivers to the seasonal container reservation program. So we'll move from 10 drivers to two, or 12 for part-time. And then we're also gonna shift one trailer driver over, we'll get into that a little bit further here. And then P E H P has let us know that they anticipate a 7% premium rate increase. And then others, products that we provide for benefits, we're not expecting to increase. U R S, Helen put together this table for you, but they're actually gonna decrease, which is an interesting thought. But I guess they're cut up now from what I understand from the markets. All right, moving on, listen to questions, I'm gonna reel through this because I don't have any interest in time. I want to make sure, leave plenty of time for Helen and Evan to go through their portion of this. The operating expenses, I mean, the highlights here is that we're implementing the monthly billing, as I mentioned. We're gonna add, and Helen will get into this as we go, as well as Evan. We want to add a, up to a 3% payment transaction fee to reduce costs to the district. So that's when residents pay online with a credit card. And we've been paying that fee, so now it's not going to pass on to the resident to pay that fee. We want to shift the, as I mentioned, shift one FTE from the trailer rental program to the seasonal container rental program. And that will increase the number of containers available by six every day. And that is a cost shift, I think we all recognize that. Doesn't mean possibly one day I'm just gonna shift. Also for the 2026 ongoing, we're gonna verify the mis-picks. Mis-picks and right now in verifying those, and that's when the customer service will go on and look at the dash cam footage that's on the truck, when a customer calls in and says, hey, you missed my cam, they'll verify that. If we actually didn't miss the cam, we do an education, the customer service folks will do an education for the customer and let them know your cam was out late, we can't come back for that. If we do actually miss it, we have scheduled go-back days. So for example, where Magna is on Monday, regular collection, so we go back for Magna, any kind of miss is on Thursday. So when we're closer to that area. So so far, thanks to our customer service team, we've saved us over $61,000 and projected savings for next year would be about 93 if we keep on speed with where we're at this year. And we're gonna do the, continue to do the light duty rightsizing and save $7,000 upfront purchases going forward. This year we saved 136K. Disposal fees are gonna go up, $2 a ton at the Salt Lake Valley facilities. And that to us is about 2,000, 200,000 annually. And we have some yard pavement that's being done this year. And then for next year, you can see the dollar amount there, that's 107,000. Liability insurance did go up. We had, as you know, a few high-cost situations that we needed to take care of. So that will go up, we're hoping to see some of that come down over the years. The work, the good news is that workers' fund has, we've improved on that score, but we really took a hit with all and liability. Maintenance fees are gonna go up $6 an hour, which to us is about 82,000 increase. And fuel, C and G is expected to rise approximately 9%, which is basically gonna be about 84,000 to us. It's interesting to see diesel pricing coming down. So I think, you know, to look at the purchase for diesel again going into 2026 is probably a wise move, especially financially. Exfoliation and turn-by-turn routing technologies, that would be Andre and he's really looking at trying to master that as best he can. And, you know, keep any kind of purchasing for software at a very low cost. So he's, he's a genius, to be honest with you, and a lot of geniuses working here at Woodford. But anyway, so that's my portion of this and we're gonna get to the dollars and cents. And Helen, you wanna run through this?
I just want to emphasize that this is a preliminary budget. We do expect it to change a little bit before October's meeting when we will present the tentative budget. And I also want to emphasize again, as Pam said, we are not including any kind of the increase on curbside services. But I will draw your attention to the first line there for residential collections. This first slide is just revenues. You can see that we budgeted in 2025, 27 million, 283,000 dollars to come in. And then our estimate for what's going to come in for 2025 is 29 million dollars. And that is also going to be our proposed budget going forward. The reason for that difference is because our budget, we wanted to be really conservative last year, we were budgeting for 2025. We were budgeting for 2025, we're not 6% fee increase. And we budgeted on a cash basis. So the fee increase, the first billing for that was in March of 2025. So we did not receive cash for the fee increase until April 1 going forward. So that includes three quarters of the fee increase. When in fact, when we post to this revenue account, it's on an accrual basis. So we're posting a whole year's worth of the increase in the books. So that's what that difference is there. It does not include any kind of fee increase for 2026. And as we go forward, we do expect these numbers to change a little bit. Evan's going to go over the proposed fee schedule with you a little bit later. And we'll adjust some of it based on what our feedback is for that. We did reduce the neighborhood trailer program revenue to 165,000 expected in 2026 because, partly because of that shift that Helen talked about, moving personnel into scrap. Other than that, we have on miscellaneous revenues. We're budgeting 325,000, which is the same as we did for 2025. Although you can see that the actuals for '24 and the estimate for '25 are over 500,000. That number includes the alternative people excise tax credit that we received from the federal government that we were seeing before, about 2015. That expired in 2021. They've been extending that year over there. They've stopped extending that. So we will not receive that for 2025 and, or yeah. And so that's why I kept the budget at 325 instead of raising it to include that. And that amounts to about 137,000 dollars a year for us. That's all I have on revenues.
We need to just point out that there's no, but there's no need to budget for use of drawing down our fund reserves. Is that?
That is absolutely correct. It's going to be adding to, we expect to add to our current reserves in 2026 and 2025. So we go to the next page and that personnel expenses, taking the ordinary numbers. This does include our wages and salaries, the 3.5% COLA and 2% merit that Helen discussed with you already. We reduced the budget for overtime by 100,000 dollars. We have experienced this year reduced overtime or hoping that that continues. But we did want to keep it a little bit higher because, you know, it's just an estimate. We just don't know quite yet. So we're keeping it about 449,000 dollars in the budget for 2026. I reduced the pension, the retirement pension by half a percent based on what the information we have from U R S is. And health insurance does, we're estimating that 7%. We did get some information from P E H P that it's been coming in between 6% and 8% increases. So we went to 7 and we should be carrying what the actual number is for the year.
A final question on the temporary labor. Yes, like two years in a row, plus two, 10, 10, 16, and both usually budgeted in over 400,000. Why are you budgeting?
I kept the budget there because while you're right, it has been low. We've been ever staffed in temporary labor for the last couple of years. And so if we were to be fully staffed, that's what it would be. And we will be having the 3.5% COLA also is included on our temporary labor. And so because of that increase, and we're hoping to be fully staffed going forward, that we can wrap it.
It's primarily scrap, isn't it?
Yes, yes. And then, let's see, what else do we have here? Workers' compensation is going up because the indicators did increase the insurance premium for workers' compensation. But as you probably know, they take, they take a three-year average and move that average everywhere. And our costs for workers' comp are going down. So we do expect that to go down in future years. But for this year, we are taking good, like, on that. Otherwise, all the highlights I have there. We want to move to operating expenses. Again, we're real numbers. I've included the $84,000 and we expect it to be able to increase for C in June. Our maintenance will be going up. We use, of course, the county fleet for our maintenance. And they told us that they're going up $6 per hour for labor. And that will amount to about 82,000 dollars. It's included in the 2026 budget. I've adjusted the budget for disposal fees, about that $200,000 that Pam's already talked about with the $2 per ton increase. That's all we can be. Can purchases, I'm assuming that those costs are going up. I don't know for sure, but I added a 3% increase there for potential cost of those cans increasing. Our IT charges through the accounting will increase about $30,000 in 2026, which is 13%. That's based on our research of that during 2025. Pam mentioned the yard pavement improvement plan. That's an increase for 2026 of 35,619 dollars. Our book list rentals for the scrap program, we listed here at 161,100, but I do have an updated number since then, which will be updated in your tentative budget. It's now going to be 168,150, so not a huge increase, but just a little bit of a difference. And the budget for other is staying at the 1.7 million. You can see it's been lower than that in the last couple of years. But that doesn't include bank fees. And as we've discussed with monthly billing, which goes to increase as well. So I left it at the 1.7 million. And then if we go to the next page, we have our planned capital purchases. And you can see that these include carryovers from 2024 and 2025, and then new purchases for 2026. We are purchasing, in the process of purchasing a book list for the scrap program that was ordered in 2024. We have not received that yet. We have a little bit left to go on that. We still find purchasing the cab over delivery truck for the cans program. We still have the bodies to pay for and receive the eight diesel sideload trucks that we purchased and left it as a C and G because that's what was approved in the budget for 2025. But we did end up, as you probably remember, ordering and purchasing diesel trucks because of the cost savings there. We're in the process of purchasing a used book lift truck. So I'm going to. So that's staying in. And then for 2026, new purchases, we've included eight diesel sideload trucks, estimating 429,900 for each of those. Another cab over delivery truck for cans at 75,603 light-duty trucks at 194,000 dollars. So the total we've spent for 2026 capital purchases is 5,509,598 dollars.
I think it's important just to recognize that we do have ongoing discussion and analysis as to purchase of diesel commercial motor vehicles as opposed to the compressed natural gas. And so some of the diesels that we got just three, four, six months ago, I'm not sure the timing, but we just put in service. And so we're looking at the cost differential for fuel, which we do, we're seeing diesel go down, C and G go up. But as, as this proposed replacement for the additional eight diesel trucks, we are looking at the cost differential between the C and G and the diesel. They are 50,000 less per unit approximately. So still an ongoing savings there. And then these trucks that are being proposed for replacement are based on a replacement schedule, though based on mileage and utilization, where we can hopefully maximize our resale value, especially for the diesels that are coming onboard. Typically, repulsed vehicles are on a replacement schedule of every seven to eight years. And this is one of the many things that Andy does in addition to his title of being an asset manager station, supporting those replacements, tracking those schedules and moving these things forward. And so we are still looking at significant cost savings, even though the cost of new or replacement vehicles does unfortunately continue to increase.
We go to the next page. We have our cash projections with, again, no fee increase. And these are covered there based on incumbent information. This is including the same assumptions that we had last time. We are assuming that for operational expenses, we will be spending 98% of the budget. Additional assumptions are 1% per year increase in revenue from growth, 3% per year increase in operating expenses. We're including increases in costs for monthly billing, net of cost mitigating factors. And those include, I'm hoping to double the evil customers from when we started in, in May with our campaign. We are proposing in the piece there, which Evan will talk to you more about later, the transaction fee on credit card charges for online payments. And it also loses, includes rather, an increase in the revenue income from, from interest because we'll have on cash in the bank. As we go forward, you can see it says it's amended. It's amended because you brought your original package. On Thursday, we revised it and gave you another on Friday. And this includes that difference for the three quarters versus four quarters of cash from again for that fee increase. So we expect to see from the bottom line here, cash to operational expenses with 21% in 2025. And then going forward, staying above that 20% level, which I know is the board policy to try to stay, stay above 20%. And then it starts to drop again in 2028. This, of course, includes no fee increases. And then, of course, continues to drop as we go after 2028. So based on this, first, I would like to say that ideally, Evan and I would like to say a 25% factor there. That would be 90 days, which is recommended by science financial folks that we hire, recommend 90 days. And I know the vibrating agencies will get a 90-day cash on hand when they were looking at bonding. But 20% has been the board policy and it is pretty good going forward. I would recommend considering a fee increase around 2028 because it starts to drop under that 20% level. And if we go to the next page, we can see the results of the increases we do based on the data that we have today. Scenario one, that would be a dollar 50. And I just chose a dollar 50 because that's what was recommended by science going forward. In 2028, if you increase fees by a dollar 50, that increases over 20% to 23% the cash to operational expenses. And then you're okay in '29. And then in '25, it starts to drop back again. The second scenario is an increase in 2028 and 2020, '30. And you can see we're not going past 2030 on these estimates, but it does fix that up to 20% back year and probably the next year. I'm not sure. And then if you go to scenario three, if we just wait and do it in 2029, that really doesn't fix anything because it takes us to 16% in 2029 and then it drops to 12% in 2030. But if you did 2029 and 2030, it looks slightly better for 2030, but it really doesn't fix it and bring you back up over that 20%. So waiting to 2029 is probably not an ideal situation. It doesn't really fix things very well. No, they're just, you know, food for thought, things to consider. We're not really bringing action today, of course, because it's just a preliminary budget. And then next is the piece schedule. And finally, I'm going to take that.
Thank you, Helen. Good job. So, you know, as we've been here for just now on week five, I'm still actually learning a lot. And, you know, one thing that I continue to emphasize is that the team bring forward ideas to where we can reduce our operating costs and enhance our efficiencies. And so we've looked at many items here. There are some items here for discussion today. We wanted to have some board feedback on several considerations. But first and foremost, on the fee schedule for 2026, we are again proposing no change, no adjustments to the standard residential collection services. So for the weekly garbage and recycling collection, the scrap program and all of the additional supplemental services. Those are proposed to, again, stay the same with, with no changes. The next page and then the page after, so we're giving one of the more challenging things to discuss, unfortunately, than that. We have identified the right-hand column and thank you Renee for supporting updating this. The reason and thought process for some of these proposed preliminary changes. So first to talk about the trailer program. So I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past about the cost of the district. Are we recovering our cost for this program? So as we're looking to shift resources from the trailer program to the scrap program next year, you know, one item is that we are anticipating that there will likely be fewer services provided and requests for the trailer program as a whole. So we really talked about this a lot internally. Would really like to see how the quantity of requests and how the trending is impacted from some of these, these, these ongoing shifts. And so we do know that the trailer program is costing us more money than we're recovering for our, our fees. And so we are proposing at this time, a nominal $10 per service increase for both the green waste trailer program and for the bulk waste trailer program. So that would equate to increasing the green waste trailer from $80 to $90 per service and then the bulk waste trailer from $140 to $250 per service. And so this is not scrap. This is separate and independent and ancillary service. This is also where we could start talking about in preparation of potential zone pricing by service area, by distance between post-collection facilities. So for the green waste drop-off for the landfills, for example, as well. But we also are looking at potentially basing out the trailer program. And as Pam mentioned, it costs us more money. There's more maintenance. There's additional tires to be concerned about as it comes to those trailers, but retaining enough to service some of the more restricted areas that needs higher maneuverability. So that's something we'll be looking at as well. So again, a very nominal increase in proposed for the trailer program, where we can look at trends and further evaluate coming into calendar 2027. The next item down is highlighted red because what the team and I discussed is that as we ramp up scrap, there's likely that we'll have less capacity to have these separate 14-yard, that's the scrap program, roll-on container programs availability. So for 2026, we're actually proposing to remove this from the fee schedule. So we can have the trailer service as that ancillary option, but then we ramp up scrap. So if we're trying to accommodate for requests for additional seasonal containers, we're going to be more limited in that capacity. So at least for '26, perhaps taking that off of this fee schedule for ancillary requested services. We still do have this in the special events pricing for cleanups as well. So it was still on the option, but wouldn't really actively promote this. And also, given the reduced cost, because these are 14 yards versus 18 yards, customers oftentimes elect to have that less expensive service and then kind of hindering our capacity to provide that service while we look at this, this trend in having the scrap program kind of being boosted with allocations and staffing and supports. The other item that we also have changed here and that up to one ton, that's in the parentheses, used to be up to two tons. And so oftentimes, and I think Renee has data on this, oftentimes we are servicing, these are less than one ton or 2,000 pounds of per load. But when they are over that one-ton amounts, the district has been essentially putting the extra cost, the extra bill for that. So we are proposing that after one ton, that those fees are increased by the per-ton rate, which is now reflected here towards the bottom of this section at $48 per ton. And so we propose a $3 increase on that because of the number one, the $2 increase per ton at the Salt Lake County facilities. And we could pass on the cost exactly directly to the customer if we wanted to, but there's still administrative costs in managing and billing and moving setups forward. So I will pause there. The other increases here on this page are relatively nominal. The next category of additional fees, we have that to some discussion. The, I would like to receive some feedback from the board. A little pause there. Are there any questions on the trailer versus scrap and some of these proposed pricing? I know we've talked about increasing trailers to a larger degree than what we're currently proposing.
We increase in scrap.
So scrapping the free service that's additional to the monthly rates. I think we've also talked about increasing the, the trailer program fees as well. I think we've also talked about increasing the the trailer program fees as well. And I give those good views myself, and they're finally starting to to click to me. But I can certainly clarify if this is all for the other questions.
We tested the fourteen yard rental this year, that roll off rental. We tried it out, you know, to see what would go. But since we're, what Evan's saying, since we're shifting that FTE, we, you know, the team has said, let's get rid of that option for rental.
I think this makes sense. I. For this year and then looking at like long term phasing out options that kind of, we've talked about that. And then maybe this would be like started up to be that makes sense to me.
We have a ton of data, I have the opportunity to review it. Also, I appreciate the time, but I know that the team has a lot more to study on this than than I would at this time. Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, I I'd just prefer to phase it out, the trailer program. Other two. Think maybe it was a business, you would have, would have a choice, you would even consider continuing to think about it and look at it. It's a business, you have to say no, you cannot. So the way, and it seems too likely, we don't look at that in government and case of a network service, we want to do this rather than.
And these aren't the trailers that we're kind of required to have for any kind of health department. Or situations.
Well, we don't know about required, so we're mandated to provide that black cannon, right? So these, if we have a roll offs available, those trailers start to go away as a rental. If we're not going to have a rental service any longer, then, but we keep enough traders for the cannons, right? Because they're most versatile. So code enforcement would still be an option, and we still want to help our cities with any kind of issues that pop up. So there would be some sort of an option. Right now, we keep the bulk trailer for two fifty and the green for ninety. So that's still an option for cities.
So we should use those instead of, I just want to make sure that we're not entering that.
And you don't want to have any legal dumping going forth further either. And the other thought is, if you expand scrap year long, then that gives more options for residents as well. But on the very last page of the. The last page. Special cleanup options, as Evan mentioned, that there is the fourteen yard roll off container that cities can can use as an option at a hundred and eighty five. So that's where that stays the same for cities or for trailer, but that's what's best.
And so my recollection, the past discussions and analysis is that the bulk trailers, the district has identified an average cost to the organization of four hundred dollars per service. Is that correct? Correct? So. So it seems like we're really on a good. I guess agreement to look to phase the trailer program out where appropriate over time. So I was hoping to kind of get a little bit more direction on whether or not this proposed increase for the service for the trailers is. Something that we should need as proposed, not increase at all whatsoever, or should we increase it further for twenty twenty six? I mean, but.
I guess it just don't even understand what it is that phase it out over time, that's so big. It's just not, how can I understand what you mean? What is your, what is your direction? What are the priorities you've been looking at? How are you going to address this? How can I understand more clearly? Because it's too big to meet the language.
Right, so I think, you know, as I kind of get more familiar with the operations and our financials, I think throughout twenty twenty six. To really further evaluate the programs, you know, we can increase our scrap program support with the allocations. And see how our trailer program is therefore utilized and requested by the customers. And so further understanding those requests, our capacity. And the amount of services to really look at how much can we refine this by community, by area. I think, you know, immigration, canyon, and Big Hollywood, Brighton is where we will probably will need to have the trailers moving forward. But I think for me, I think we'll be evaluating this throughout twenty twenty six and bringing back to the board further information. Financial data for consideration purposes.
The first thing out is, starting in twenty twenty six, it's only going to be half the availability of what's been before that.
It seems like the data is pretty clear. How often it's used by each city as code enforcement for the city versus customers. I think we, Renee was really good about breaking that out. And I think it's just really clear, it's in the red. I know that there was some discussion about, well, it needs to be a service to the cities. But even then, it's one percent of the population that's using it. And so there was discussion, well, maybe if we increase the revenue for it. I just think we need to phase it out and start taking those funds and putting them in the balanceware or putting it on the bottom line. Including the eight year, ten, another year, five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. It sucks the knees to lay down. Yeah, I understand your position that you're in completely, but it's something we just.
If the board gives that direction, then it goes away next year, then that's the direction and the policy that we, the staff will carry out for sure. I think it would just need to be direction from the whole board.
The one concern I have is the comment for immigration canyon and Brighton. I don't understand exactly how those work, the parameters and the demands for that trailer program. And I know you're limited with what you can do. And so definitely we'll have that discussion, because we need to be immune to those differences. Yeah, it's not a long sight. No.
There would be a little revenue from selling those trailers. So I don't know if there was that direction, or if you want to give that direction or.
You know, I guess the the main thing is, does anybody have any concerns about moving forward? Prevent us from moving forward with that direction? Or is everybody comfortable moving forward, saving? Immigration of Brighton's situation.
Do you have any concerns, Pam? You can say what you want, or leave it, but I mean, I just don't feel like I know enough to, because I, because I, I hear what what Anna and Sheri say. I'm like, yeah, I agree that makes a lot of sense. I just want to make sure we're looking at all of the pieces and I'm not missing something. So do you have any concerns? Because I don't like the idea of keeping something that's saved in the red, but.
No, no, I mean, this was just the thought of phasing out, this would be like the first, the first step. So you move one FTE, we presented those options to you previously, just so you know, Evan, of moving one FTE over and having that resource over into the scrap program. And what that cost shift would be, and then what it would be with two FTEs. And then what that container count would hopefully go to for availability. So this was the thought is that this is the initial phase out. But if you, as a, as a board, want to totally. Eliminate the trailer rental option, then I think the team would go back and Andy and team would say, okay, how do we sell these off? And how many do we need to keep? For Brighton immigration, the trucks, I don't think we have to, I mean, we already have the trucks that can tow them, right? We already have the hook lift trucks as well, purchasing, we're adding to what the district already owns. So that we do, we relieve that dependency on Salt Lake County for their hook lift trucks, right? Because we only have six, six months anyway. So that's the thought as well, is if we're going to grow those hook lift trucks, why not have scrap all year round, similar to what we do with trailer? That makes sense, I don't know, but I answered your question. But there's, there's a couple of different options, and honestly, it's a policy decision. And if you would like to see the trailer rental program go away and those costs for the FTE and operational go over to scrap. That is an option. If you want it to totally happen in twenty twenty six.
And that's realistic. And I think it makes a lot of sense. I wonder what it would look like for my city to be able to, because if the trailer rental goes away, obviously, that. Then our city has to turn around and find someone to come and do those big cups. Unless you. City basis.
Unless you rent a container.
But I like this container idea, what would that look like? And and I don't have a problem with charging a city the full cost of doing that. But what would that be?
For the container.
Yeah, and that maybe runs numbers on that.
I was actually going to suggest the same thing, is that why isn't the municipality paying the actual expense? I understand they're helping the residents out and the customers, but I think the cities can afford to pay their way unless they leave them.
The four hundred.
Is it cheaper to deliver a scrap than it is to trailer? Because you don't know the the expenses of insurance and blah, blah, blah for the trailer versus. Sounds very technical. Now, I'd love to see the number, but it'd be really interesting.
I think bringing back for October, because you have to adopt a tentative budget, and it can be. And if you figure out two scenarios.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Andy, I know he's digging out some numbers, because we did test the fourteen yard roll off as a, as a rental, right? So Andy dug in to see what that did cost look like, because it's a, it's a, however I want to call it, a deviated route versus a set route. On the scrap, it's a set route, if that makes sense. Well, those are more efficient.
Right.
Especially with economies efficiencies of scale. Or if you have one roll off that's going around like your trailers, it's a deviated route, so it does cost a lot.
Sure.
So trying to dig those out.
Yeah, it's not like you can work those in different regions and just say, oh, it is going here than here, but staying in that lower quadrant or. Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we're kind of for potentially moving forward by eliminating those. And then obviously making sure that we keep immigration in Brighton in mind. And whether or not you can do something else with them that still accommodates them. That's something that I guess you guys have to start to figure out with them.
Just make sure I understand. Are we thinking getting rid of trailer entirely or we'll keep some for the cities to use, but the cities won't pay the full cost? We're not, we're getting rid of it.
The rental.
Trailer, the rental. True, except for our friends.
Yeah, immigration.
And that was the reservation.
Yeah, so I mean, it certainly makes sense not, I, I, I think the hesitation is to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. But it does seem to make sense. Hearing the vast agenda kind of.
Even if we shot ourselves.
Yeah.
Remember, it is a cost shift. It's a cost shift. So, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, we just have to somehow get it back, whereas we're seeing the red flags and it can't allow for it.
But it sounds like kind of in favor of that idea, at least moving that forward. But it sounds like that's a positive towards the form. I think there was just probably a little like, I don't want to step on anybody's toes for another area, like specifically where we have Brighton immigration use nice. So let's make sure they're taken care of. I think it makes sense to the board. Even if we do it half like for our stuff, let's, let's bring back an official thing of over, I think.
In New York, we need to support, we got on on this page.
Yeah, so the additional fees, so we're looking at a couple prospective. New fees that are not intended to bring in revenue, but they're intended to offset operating costs. And so the the first one that is the, we're advocating for as as the highest is this payment transaction fee. So Helen has a pretty detailed analysis of this that we didn't want to necessarily present today in detail. But essentially, we pay a per unit transaction fee for every payment that kind of goes across our system, whether it's. An online bill pay or credit card, it's different tiers of those. And so as we go from quarterly to a monthly billing, we are anticipating a relatively significant increase. In our payment transaction fees that currently the district covers in its entirety. I think Helen, you're estimating about it's over eight hundred thousand dollars next year. And estimated cost to the district. And so maybe Helen can speak more towards this particular item, but there are some rules and limitations. But we would like to propose an up to three percent transaction fee. For certain types of transactions for which our customers are paying their, seeing to be monthly bill. We do have an RFP that is currently active to look at our payments processing organization, to look at ideas and ways that we can reduce. Those costs moving forward, so we'll be able to refine this over time. Maybe Helen, if you would like to add anything to that particular item.
I would just like to say that we will bring back some information that, as Evan said, is a lot more detailed, so that you can look at it and decide how you want to proceed. If you want to proceed with something like this, which is highly recommended on my part. And what what that will actually look like, and that really depends on who we choose as a vendor, once we get a vendor chosen. So once that happens, we'll be able to bring back some more information and choices on how to proceed.
And I have to reiterate, when you bring that information back, I think it gives you a little bit of fun, just to understand what we're kind of currently are across. And then if you're anticipating, you're saying it comes out from the top with way more than what we've happened, have been. Again, the other thing, and this is kind of a weird way to look at this, but it's also part of the service that we've been providing to the customer. So now we say, you're going to pay that, in essence, it's saying you're going to pay some fee. And it pays a rate increase just a different way. And so it just seems we have to take that in consideration, because we can't say, well, we're not going to do a rate increase, but we are going to charge a bit. You know what I mean? Because it's apparently something with service that being provided. Not suggesting it's a bad idea, just suggesting that we have to understand that it's still increased the services that we're now providing now. Continuing.
I think it's real important that, like, I understand the need for this fee for this. Product processing fee, but if we're in a period, we will do. We need to make sure that there are options, if you look at options that don't. Or that's a bank transfer or something else, there are a lot of different things. And so that that quite hard to speak. Very, very much it's a decrease. A significant decrease per job from people three percent.
I would agree with all of that. And I know we talked in the pre-board meeting that there would be some options available. I'm not familiar enough, but if you know, like, like, there are other online options that don't incur those kind of processing fees. And obviously, that's the ideal. But I think I'm more comfortable with it if we can provide the people that we serve with. Like, if you don't want to pay this, there is an option available. Like, and so if we can be really clear about what that is and make sure that's clear in our message as well. I was just, I was, as I was looking at something about like the movie tickets, like if you order them online, you pay extra. But then if you go in in person, you you don't. And I've done it both ways, like, I'm buying like my whole family tickets, I'm not going to pay this, so I'm going to go in or whatever. I just think, I I'm more comfortable with it if there's options for people with, it's really going to affect to say, okay, well, this is not for me.
And I, I'd like to reiterate the same. I think that's a very thoughtful way to look at it. And if I could share just the experience Sandy had when we did this, we did it increased, you know, because it was ahead, we were taking. And where I think we could have been more effective is what you're emphasizing is a communication plan, you know? It felt to, even though we've been talking about it publicly, not everyone tunes in to our city house meetings, you know? So we, it felt like a blind side to a lot of our residents. And I don't know that we armed those receiving the phone calls as well as we could have with information. For example, are you aware you could do an ACH online, et cetera? So I love, I love these insights that have been shared, and I would just reiterate, it's going to be important that we try not to. People will always feel blindsided, but whatever we can do to empower those who take the calls, that help them acknowledge. We recognize the impact, here's the why, like, what do we do to arm them with enough information? So that the the person receiving that information acknowledges, oh, you did through, think through the impact this was going to have. Oh, you are army. Oh, you are arming me with some choices. So they may not like the decision by the end of the phone call they've had. They will go, I understand the process and I appreciate you being in tune to how this would impact me. So that would be.
I was wondering, what do we currently do? I mean, I know this is six months, but I, I may given options besides credit card?
Currently, yes, people can pay online with an ACH with their credit card. They can pay auto pay with either as well. They can walk in, they can send us the check. They can call over the phone and we'll pay their payment as well. So we do have a lot of options for people on payments right now. And all those options would still be available. It's just, as you said, the matter of, you know, which of those would be charged to pay and which would not. And we do have some detailed information that you're requesting. It turns out it's about a little bit over price, what we're paying now. Expect about four hundred forty-three thousand dollars worth of fees for paying payments. Including like lockbox payments, so all payments running into twenty twenty-five. And it's a little bit over price that much as it goes forward.
So as long as we have options, then, then I'm fine with that.
Just a little bit of historical reference here, you know? And until the internet came along, people didn't usually pay their bills by a credit card. And so institutions and municipalities like this, we didn't incur merchant fees because they would send a check in or they'd come and pay cash. But because of the software is all integrated now, no one really has a choice but to pay these merchant fees that have never been on the balance sheet before. And so I think we need to make that. And I think people have become a little more aware of that. You know, there's a lot of talk about you're getting high miles or whatever it is, and some institutions are getting paid. So I think the historical understanding for everybody here as well these fees were never even on, you know, in port.
And on my take, I, you know, I, I completely agree with Sherry over there, you know, but it, it effectively is a fee increase. Especially if that is your only method of payment that you're accepting. And in my mind, you have to do that if that's the only way you're taking. If you're taking other forms of payment that you either don't incur as great a fee internally or maybe no fee at all, we should be encouraging and educating people. So when they go to make their convenient credit card transaction, hey, you don't want to pay this three percent fee that we're tacking on because it costs us this. Then here's your option to do it fee free, mail them a check. Right there is the payment. Because then we can say, well, it's not a fee increase. It is literally, we've got twelve methods of payment that we're accepting. We prefer you do this way. I thought we have these other options. But if you take those other routes, here is that fee. And we might get very clear that, you know, I think that's probably the best way forward for that, I think.
And in all reality, ACH is most of the time have some kind of fee associated. Because payment can be.
I mean, there's things like even in Zelle, like in my business, my bank even said like, yeah, we don't charge for Zelle transactions. And I was like, really? You know, so that's something to consider too, is that, you know, can hit up with Zelle. Is that something that, and it's not available to the customer.
But they, they don't charge customer, but they will charge.
No. They don't charge either side.
Do you charge that?
My, my bank does for my little small businesses, they, there's no fee on either side. They, they treat it like a PayPal transaction between two people. And even so. On the basis, and they said, no, yeah, that's, you don't charge a fee in my.
We've had that sent in Facebook, so.
For the first three months? No, no ever. Are you sure? You're not business? It's kind of what I was like, I don't, I didn't believe it, but, you know. It's something that they could be able to do too. But I think, you know, to several people's points, education to our residents is the most key thing, so. But generally, I'm not in favor of fees unless you're really saying it is because this is the most expensive thing we have and it's only going to be associated to that part of the method. And we are still providing you a way to do it, like writing a check and mailing it in or whatever, a D A C H. If that's a nominal, nominal fee for us that we can absorb, you know, right? That's just my thoughts.
I would say on the other two, recycling contamination fee and late set out return pickup fee. That's just essentially like being charged a huge weight mistake, right?
Right, so I was gonna give a little bit of background, just high level discussion on that to get some, some input. But I will say, you know, great discussion. I really appreciate the comments and feedback on the essentially payment convenience fee. So we have talked a lot about this and Helen has several scenarios. And I think the one that we were more leaning towards would be, this would be assessed only if we were receiving payment by a credit card. And so, so ACH and other options would not incur this, this convenience fee essentially. So we've also talked about how can this be also be potentially used as a tool or to incentivize people transitioning to the payroll spill as well, which would also save us internally. So definitely we'll come back with more information and more refined proposals on that. So the two other items that are for discussion, and as I kind of introduced this section, would be more to, you know, not to increase revenues, but to offset some of the organization's costs. And so the most directly one that we could discuss is, is as we've looked at confirming whether or not, you know, a, a late set out occurred when someone called and says, you can pick up my trash recycling. If we can confirm that, you know, if the, the, their can was not out of the time of service and we talked to the customer and they agreed and they still wanted to come back based on our availability and that kind of return pickup fee schedule, could we provide a nominal you know, cost that would be accepted by the customer prior to going and servicing that? So again, for us to essentially be cool, some of our costs for providing that return pickup fee. For, for a candidate was not, if we missed it on our own accord, then we would go back, you know, based on that return schedule. There are several municipalities that have this. We've looked at even Salt Lake City that has a return pickup fee and other municipalities. So just want to get the, you know, the board's temperature on maybe adding something like this again, not to increase revenues, but to offset some of our incurred costs for the customer just to, hey, I really need you to come back and pick up my trash. I've got a family event or a party or whatever it may be. But if we can show first that they didn't have their can out of service, that they agree for us to come back to pick it up based on a to be determined fee. So let's get some, some thoughts on that we can present and we'll refine to approach on that and kind of have this as a discussion.
I think that's a great idea.
Me too.
Yeah, exactly.
That's on them.
Well, for, for the interest of time, it sounds like, yes.
And then if I made this on the recycling contamination fee, so again, also several municipalities. Salt Lake City has some provisions for this. So currently what we're doing, if we have a customer that has contamination, we're, we're tagging their container or the boot tag, we let them know. We're working to educate James on the team that does a lot of that. But if we have repeats contamination of these cans, to my understanding, the district has a policy where we will physically go and remove that recycling container, continue to charge the customer for the service. But within a year, we are returning that container at no cost to the, to, to the customer. So in essence, we're incurring a lot of costs, again, that are not, we're not able to recover based on our existing fee schedule. So the thought here is that, you know, as we attempt to educate, perhaps on the third time that we have a repeat contamination. It's a lot of factors and variables here, but you know, could we at least have the option to assess a contamination fee to that customer for, for repeat offenses after we've tried to educate? After we've tried to do that as well. So Salt Lake City has some provisions, there's other communities, city flags set out a provision. They didn't really use it. It was more or less at their discretion, but it provides the organization a little bit more leverage to assess those fees as opposed to incurring more and more cost over time. I think as everyone's probably aware is that the more contamination or unacceptable materials that are not charged for recovering that we deliver to these worst materials covered facilities, the more cost the district in those processing fees in the long run. So again, just want to get a, a temperature check on, on these ideas. And again, would be at, at just at the district's discretion, but we would have an SOP or even a board policy that we could adopt, I mean, bring back. Maybe twenty twenty-six is at the right time, given the time constraints. But just kind of again, want to kind of see what the thoughts were on, kind of forward potentially for this perspective.
I'm in.
As I mentioned, it's also on the education piece.
Yep.
And it sounds like it's not your first or second time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And then one other good part is the next page. So we are looking at a somewhat nominal increase on our special services accounts. So this is the front load containers. And so right now we are proposing for, for garbage only, a five percent increase for the garbage container service, zero percent increase to the recycling container service. And for, for a variety of reasons, which is, is also provided in the notes section. One item is that usually your garbage fees are, are rated priced higher to incentivize recycling than recycling lower than incentivize recycling. So recovery versus, for example. But also they defer to Pam here, but it's my understanding we have been behind in the need to increase the cost for these special service accounts. And this is, you know, typically we're servicing Salt Lake County municipal shelter, apparently. But our, you know, our collection frequency and density for these containers is in some cases, you know, quarter mile or mile between destinations. So our efficiencies here are probably a lot less than, than our standard can service. So something to consider as we even look at, you know, amending the charter potentially in the future is that if we enhance our front lawn service and then enhance our efficiencies and decrease our cost with those. So, you know, we're looking at CPI increase for the Southwest region. We're looking at the increased tipping fees. We're looking at kind of creating that separation of costs between the garbage and recycling. Other than Pam, anything else to add that I may have admitted?
No, you get it. And we were behind in that. We did significant increases to both garbage and recycling in the past. So this is, this is basically keeping up with the CPI right now. And the additional, additional costs that we have incurred will come next year.
I think Renee looked at the CPI and if I recall, it was showing like six percent over the past twelve months or something.
That's trash specifically, yes, garbage specifically, two point nine for everything else.
So the increases cost, you know, from this volume of services rather nominal. So a, a four yard from a container that's tipped once a week is, will go up by five dollars a month. So one oh two forty-eight to one oh seven sixty. So fairly nominal for the volume and simply the corresponding weight of, of that material.
I'm assuming there are coordinate days, so that you're hitting all the clusters on the same days about going back to the same area on Wednesday or back on Friday for once a week.
But that's my understanding of it. I've been with Justin and the team to talk about that for a reason. We have two, two days out of the week, we have trash and recycling routes going concurrently. And then the other three is, is trash routes on those other three days.
I'll be paying the extra.
And, and we can reassess or reevaluate, but that's kind of where we landed on was that five percent. And then we've made a corresponding change for the special events garbage rates down on the next page sixty-one, that's reflecting again a five percent increase, no change to recycling. And then we are, I'm going to speed you down on the very last page, we'll, you know, we'll look at scrap, trailer roll off, et cetera. We are just trying to really institute where we list our grandma, general records request and specifically to this V schedule as well. So before it's been on our website and the conference, that we're at least sort of incorporating this into the V schedule as a whole. We are looking at some nominal increases there as well, but to really offset our costs. And Tavarino has kind of looked at the details and the, the records rules and regulations to determine these revised fees, which is based on the lowest hourly rate of the person that's capable of performing the records and things of that nature and looking at a cost per page and per hour, things like that. So it's kind of trying to incorporate that here, the schedule for twenty-six.
Hasn't noticed that in fact, average. It had been a long time, very long time.
Do you need direction from that or?
No, I can't get a gun going.
See how fast we can move with the times.
Well, that, that was a part discussion, kind of one of the more challenging ones.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead and move to three dot five, unless it's something we pushed to next month, but. Briefly more, I'll shoot them up, I'll take it all.
Just a brief update on the RFP, go ahead now.
Yeah, like I said, we have fully developed a draft RFP. We've appropriated the, the full Wolfher team, Renee and Helen. And Rachel and I have all looked at this, we're, you know, gaining great feedback from others as well. So we have a fully drafted RFP. It's actually been sent over to one of the administrative team members with City of Harriman. So they actually have the, the document for the reviewing comments and we're looking to schedule a meeting with them.
They literally just emailed them.
Hopefully, we're hoping to meet next week. I want them to review their, and discuss their comments, ideally to make sure that we're all in consensus or that we can general agreement as to the content of the document. So did you say it would be on October? October eighth, okay. Yeah, later than that. We can look at that as well. So this will be meeting with, with the city representatives on the eighth. And then, you know, based on this first page is kind of provide a kind of a timeline of what this looks like. And right now we're kind of looking at, having the final until mid, end of January that it may push out. But we're also asking that folks that propose on the RFP, that they provide their own projected timeline for each of the activities that we're requesting as part of that. So a kickoff meeting, district provides information to the consultants. We have a draft that we're able to review and comment with for awareness information. And then they finalize that and present it to the, the board of trustees here. Currently projected for January twenty-sixth of, of next year. So that second page provides a very high level scope of what we're requesting in the documents. I don't necessarily want to go through these word for word, I certainly can, but again, looking at material impact or impacts. If Harriman City does formally withdraw, but also looking at the benefits and the impacts to Harriman City residents that are currently being serviced by the district. So looking at it from more than one perspective, of course, looking at the applicability criteria for Utah code for withdrawal from a special district. We do have in there a third party survey that they would develop and administer to residents that are serviced by the districts, looking at evaluation factors and costs for different service areas throughout the district's partner cities and looking at, you know, what evaluation factor should the board consider, recommendations? And ultimately, we're asking that they come and present to the board of trustees on the final reports. So rather lengthy document, I think we're at twenty-five pages, but we can certainly discuss in more detail. We do intend to bring this back as a recurring item to the board in subsequent months, including the month of October.
I think, I think in addition to the purpose of that, I just think you have to, you can list it, so the thoughts that increases and it will be very beneficial to this district to have that information. And that's exactly how much it costs me for each of our communities, so they understand how that's to.
I guess we'll move on to three dot six, follow up on Mr. Jordan's board.
So I mentioned that they were going to wait till next year. Apparently it's on their agenda for tomorrow night. There is a, there's a council member that apparently is interested. So Alan Anderson was their, one of their administrators for the council side. He reached out to me just late last week to let me know it'll be on. who reached out to me just late last week to let me know it'll be on their agenda. And Evan can report back next month, how that goes if they do appoint somebody. And so the plan would be that Evan and Helen would go visit with that person once they're appointed and give them an education on the district.
Sounds good. Appreciate it very much. All right, everybody, sorry for the lengthy meeting, but to get to be done. Some very important stuff to discuss. I don't believe we have a call without any important business. Can skip over that one. Seeing none, we'll move on. And I don't believe we have a need for a closed session. But let's skip over that one. But now next board meeting items, we've got the twenty twenty five quarter financial report, affirmative adoption of the twenty twenty six budget that we scheduled. And confirm the date, had a time for the public hearing to allow public comments on the twenty twenty six budget. That is scheduled currently scheduled for Monday, November seventeenth at six P M, so place mark your calendars. General managers report and human resources policy amendments and status and updates on our P for these levels done. That's all. We've got Emily and Tom, thank you, first and second.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, thanks, everybody.
Talking about the challenges of Montana people giving spatulas in the seat now, it's like, turn away.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I was letting it dry because it looked wet still, so I was like, I want it.
So, yeah, but I'll be there for all the pre-orders, Joe.
Sorry, I hear about an accident this morning. Like, is it like really in crunch your car or?
I'm sure you're thinking, it's, I mean, it's, yeah. So, I mean, it's.
But so.
It's not really, not scary, that's a wrong drop, no, it's not. It's like, like less than a year.